The regular meeting of the Busaras City Council for June the 18th, 2019 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, please.
McKeever.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Foal.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the June 4th, 2019 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Trucca to accept the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. This is the time where we grant permission for visitors to speak. If you would like to address council this evening, please step to the podium and state your name and your address. Anyone to address council tonight? No one? Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
My name is Ray, that off, I live at 210 Nethers Street.
Okay.
And I've had a couple of questions to my district city council. I was hoping that someone could maybe answer some questions about a proposed homeless shelter that's being built in my neighborhood on Wetstone Street.
This is on Ethel Street?
On Wetstone.
You're on Wetstone, yes. There was a...
Can we take this?
Yeah, why don't you? There was a meeting.
Yeah, there was an application made for the Florida zoning appeals to look into some variances for that project. There was no decision made at that meeting. They had asked for some additional, the zoning appeals board had asked for some additional information with respect to size and placement and those sorts of things. There'll be further meetings in the future on that because no decisions have been made yet. But the request was made by the Busaras, what is it? Born.
Outrageous. Worker.
Yeah.
Yeah. By that group. So nothing's final yet.
Okay, so it's not a done deal then?
No, no.
Wasn't it the planning commission?
Yeah, far from it.
What, BCA?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, planning commission. They'd ask for more details. And ultimately, planning commission would have to make a recommendation and would come to this body and then this body would schedule a public hearing citywide for that. So it hasn't even gotten out of the planning commission's state jack because they wanted more information.
Did you receive a letter in the mail?
I did from the group, I believe, that's sending this.
Okay, yeah, they said they'd send them to people that were in the immediate area.
The meetings that are taking place at the city council or will we be getting notices on those too?
When they have the public hearing, the planning commission, they'll post signs and there'll be a public notice for just a small area. And that planning commission meeting will be publicized when it happens. It's usually on access or the city's website. When if, when or if it comes out of planning commission, they should refer to council. Those will be public meetings here and the council will schedule a series of public hearings before any of those changes get made.
Did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
Did you have your address out there?
Yes.
Did you put down your phone number?
No.
If you would put down your phone number, then Todd will make sure that he has it and we will let you know whenever anything's scheduled with that.
I appreciate it.
Okay, glad we can help. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on, communications and petitions. We have a letter from the City Traffic Commission.
Yes, this is from the Traffic Commission to City Council dated June 12th to the Health and Safety Committee. The City Busaras Traffic Commission would like to recommend an amendment to the traffic control map to allow for street sweeping in the downtown area. Orders number 2728 dated 6/17/1964 established no parking on either side of North Sandusky Avenue from Charles Street to Perry Street from 3:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. The amendment would change the time to 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. A copy of the traffic control map has been closed. It's considered a duty to Traffic Commission and that needs to be deferred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, I need a motion to refer this to Health and Safety.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Folk, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor of putting this in Health and Safety Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. That will be put into committee then. That was it for standing committee reports. The Busaras City Joint Regular Committee met in regular session on Thursday, June the 6th, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. Mr. Trucca, would you like to get it started with this, please?
Okay. Members of the President, we're Mark McKeever, Dan Wireball, myself, Monica Sack, Doug Folk, Andrew Shaw, Kevin Myers, the best. The Busaras City Joint Regular Committee meeting was called my call to order by myself at 6:01 p.m. Public participation, there was none. And the order of committee business was the Service Committee met at 6:01 p.m. To talk about raw water line. Members of the President, we're Dan Wireball, Doug Folk, Andrew Shaw, and myself, Chair. Raw water line. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner explained that after conversion of the raw water line from the old water plant went to bid, some issues arose concerning long-term maintenance of the line. Although the redundant line is in good shape, most of its 10,000-feet run through mature woods along the Sandusky River raising questions about access. Gary Williams of Jones and Henry Engineering noted that for the conversion of line to be completed, several connections between the 24-inch pipe and the 18-inch pipe will have to be eliminated. Easements have been identified, but getting to some of those connections could be challenging. As an alternative, however, to converting the old raw water line, a new 16-inch line could be extended from the new water plant south along Plymouth Street. It was noted that such a line could be beneficial for potential development there and that the state grant money could possibly use for the project. Wagner observed that although cost comparisons are just rough estimates, at this point, converting the old raw water line would cost about $180,000 without taking into account the clearing of the trees. Building a new line down Plymouth Street to the railroad tracks and from there branching off north to the Crossroads Industrial Park and south into the city could cost $750,000 to $1 million. Lynn McKeever and associates will attend the next committee meeting on June 20th to go over the grant opportunities. And the administration will look into the cost of clearing trees along the route of the old raw water line. The matter was continued. Trucca recessed the Service Committee at 6:44 p.m.
Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes of the Service Committee, Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, June 20th is not going to give us enough time to get down there. It's flooded down there, there's no access to it, so we're not going to make it. So, like, you know, it's a third day.
Okay, is Mr. McKeever still coming?
He will be here, yes, we'll discuss it.
He will be here, but we don't have the...
We won't have the estimate because it's too wet.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, would you continue through Mr. McKeever?
Public participation. Mr. McKeever asked...
Wait a second, the Finance Committee?
Sorry.
No, you just need to say that.
Okay, the Finance Committee, it did not meet because the raw water line was continued in the Service Committee. Public participation. Mr. McKeever asked about the city's protocol for putting up high-water signs during heavy rain events. Wagner replied that the Street Department coordinates with the Police Department in responding to flooded areas. Trucca asked for a motion to adjourn the Joint Regular Committees. Motion by Shaw, second by Sack to adjourn at 6:47 p.m. The motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Traffic Commission, we don't have any minutes. Are there any traffic questions that anyone would like to direct to the mayor? One?
Madam President, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow.
Okay, meeting scheduled tomorrow?
Noon tomorrow.
Noon tomorrow?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Report of city officers. Mayor E. Sir.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Last week, I attended the Ohio Municipal League of Mayors Conference. Very good conference, always valuable on a close border. And we get to talk to mayors of similar-sized towns, townships, towns and villages and funny issues facing their communities. We share so many of the same problems and opportunities. Lieutenant Governor Houston gave a very good talk about where they're headed, where they're trying to take Ohio. He was the election speaker on Thursday. Great presentations on Home Rule, I know that's near and dear to your heart and mine too in how it relates to us. Interesting presentation on property maintenance, what we're talking about here. And there's one on the future of smart driving in Ohio. It's a hero right now, actually. There are several projects in the state that are actually going on right now about talk cars talking to buried cables, buried information and talk back and forth. It's heading here. It's heading here, maybe a generation before it gets here, but it's on the way. And the goal is to reduce the number of traffic incidents with pedestrians or with other cars to zero. And then the trivia question I had, I had on Facebook, what does the new, what does the number 294,789 represent as it relates to traffication? I'll give you the answer now because no one on Facebook knew it. The answer is that is a number of crashes that are in the state of Ohio every year. Try to imagine that going down to zero. It's a big, big challenge. We continue to work with the Census Committee. You and I met this week with Ida, former, what's called Complete Count Committees. Census will be taken next year. Our goal is to have a very high participation rate because our count will also determine how we are funded federally and statewide. So it's very important that we get the word out. And there's going to be plenty of opportunities to do that. Maybe some of you would be willing to serve on some of those committees. We might be in touch with you later. And CGI will be in town sometime this summer. We're recording new videos for the website, we already announced that. I did want to mention again, they are calling businesses in the community and maybe certain individuals about soliciting sponsorship. It is legitimate business. The videos are very high-quality, got a lot of good comments on them and we're going to be doing some of them once. Summer movie series began on Friday the 14th after the first Friday event. We had a wonderful crowd. Saturday night, they continued, which wasn't quite as good. But there was a huge crowd during the day and I think they were all tired. I was tired. But thank you to Jerry, our producer, for putting those on. And we had a nice time, we had a nice time. I think the people really enjoyed it. Thanks, Rob, for hitting up and getting this shirt. The volunteers were very important and very busy last week, a safety town. Maybe some of you had a chance to go make arenas every day. But still, the message of safety got through to the youngsters going into kindergarten. Places fire departments did their usual wonderful work and we thank them for that. We had, what, a couple of these days this June so far? One of them happened to be on the car show.
Right.
Thank God for that. Wonderful crowd, I'm hoping most of you were here. Thanks to the FOP, they did a fantastic job. I heard they had over 500 cars registered. Yeah, so my car was registered, I did not win a trophy. You know, next year, Tracy, I'm going to go after him without the trophy, just so you know that. So thanks again for that. I mean, everything was fine. It was a wonderful, wonderful day. And everybody had a good time. We had over seven inches of rain so far this month and that doesn't include what we had last night, which I've heard some places got up to three inches. We have been progressing work on the pool. They're out there working tonight even. And they're putting rebar in at the bottom of the pool. Concrete will be poured as soon as the rebar is inspected. The deep end is, as you might guess, has been collecting water. We've been pumping water out of there. We cannot lay rebar until we get the water out there. And it's just, it's a challenge. But everything's got to be inspected by the state. They're going to pour concrete. We'll be using special chemicals to use fast-drying concrete. And then we need four to five days to paint the bottom of dry weather. Four to five days of dry weather. So we haven't had four to five days of dry weather since, I think, July of last year. So, I'm, yeah, that's very... So pray for good weather, we need that to get the pool open. Same with the tennis courts. We were out there yesterday and Rich and Seal Cody was out there working. They were pouring weeds out of cracks as well as power washing. The tennis courts and pickleball courts where they're going to be, they're ready to go. They're very, they're just chomping at the, they're very frustrated. They don't do the job, they don't make money. Same with the pool guys. And farmers are all in the same boat. The guys we had pre-con meeting yesterday and they're, they're just been horrifically delayed by the weather. I guess that's it. Just pray for good weather. Thank you, Madam President. I do have one referral.
Okay.
And we want to refer to the use of city hall lobby for a local organization. I guess that would go to public lands and buildings.
Okay, I need motion then to put this into committee. Public lands and buildings, the use of the city hall lobby. So I have a motion, please.
So move, second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passed. Does anyone have any questions for the mayor this evening, Mr. Trucca?
Could you give me an update on the railroad projects?
Well...
You know, it's the Sandusky River.
Yeah, we have an update on it. It's tough to tell you that the flood didn't wash away a substantial amount of the dam, the structure. And they were stones down there, they got stone out of the river. They're rebuilding this and it's been so wet down there the last couple of days. We haven't had a chance to get down there, so...
Are they going to put bigger pipes in? Because right now, right now, I mean, who do I go to for relief?
We went to our congressman. We went to Norfolk Southern, we went to ODMR, and we went to the, oh geez, Army Corps of Engineers. And it's frustrating dealing with the railroad. None of those folks really knew anything about it. What they told, they didn't know. They said, we talked into the Norfolk Southern representative, they said the project was approved as, I don't know if you saw it, but that was 36-inch pipes that they had spaced out. Obviously, it wasn't enough for the rain that we've been having lately. So, there's really not a lot that we can do about it. There's really not. The railroad, it needs to replace the trestle. They have a plan, they're trying to get in by November. It's, if you, if you have some financial damage to your land because of flooding, I would just refer you to, you know, to the Norfolk Southern. And we get a number or the congressman. But you know...
So much of my land is my house.
They're very, yeah. Well, there's flooding in the golf course, there's so much...
Yeah, but I don't live on the golf course, I live in my house.
I know, I'm just saying there's flooding around all that area there. If you're, if you own the golf course and you can't get people out golfing because it's underwater, it's a financial loss for them too. So it's frustrating. The railroad, for instance, the tree across the street, that was run into. The driver fell asleep, hit the tree, killed the tree, right? So that, that was about two years of negotiating to get a settlement there. The railroad is very difficult. Very difficult. We have them in here, I can tell you other instances. Trying to get them to paint yoga passes. You know, those, that one Mansfield Street just looked terrible. They're, they're just very frustrating to deal with. Rob, you have any suggestions of something the city could be doing? I would certainly do.
There's, right now, the Corps of Engineers has, and ODMR, well, ODMR didn't grant those permits, Corps of Engineers did. We're kind of, nobody do.
I can tell you they're putting rebar in. The current cement foundation for that, they drilled holes in it and they've got rebar, a whole rebar frame around it because they're going to be pouring more cement in there. I know that that's been done, I've seen pictures of it. So they are down there working.
I have to stop them if they were...
But they don't want anybody near. They don't want anybody near down there because of all the truck traffic and everything else. But they are working.
We'll keep a monitor, do anything we can.
I just want to know if they work on any bigger pipes or something.
Well, as soon as, I could stop down tomorrow, I'll get down there and ask them. I'll let you know.
Mr. McKeever?
Yeah, I, I had a question for you, it was about the Burger King.
Yes.
But I see it's construction is in process?
It'll start August 1st.
Okay. I was, wanted to clarify, I heard the planning, you hear rumors of certain planning commission was debating about the parking lot.
No.
I'm just saying, I was just curious about that.
Oh, there's nothing.
Because I'm going to say...
There was no debate about it.
That's fine.
We talked about some things, about screening for the line, you come up with the neighbors.
Right, right.
About curbing. We didn't talk to any of the department. About signage, those types of things. And they're very easy to work with, they're very manageable, they're anxious to get in here.
The other question I had was, I've heard complaints about the railroad crossing for CSX on Wetstone Street. They only repaved one part of it. Only one run, one line, not both lines.
I've been in touch with them too. They're, I asked them about that one and then...
North Sandusky? Are they ever going to do the approach or are we going to just have to...
Well, that is actually railroad right of way. So we're not typically allowed to do that approach. So I wrote to the CF and EU leases F and CSX, the chairman, and he said he referred to a maintenance person. And I haven't heard from them yet, so...
Yeah, been up there in three years, four years?
Well, the history of that was, they were upgrading the line several years ago. And because they wanted to bring oil trains through here and they had to upgrade the line. So they hired someone, veteran to come and fix the crossings. So he knows Walnut Street, Sears Street, Spring Street, done beautifully.
Right.
Did a wonderful job. They let him go and then Lane Street and, I'm sorry, I meant Poplar. Then Lane Street and Sandusky were a disaster. Because they did them in December. Now, what happens in December, you can't find asphalt. So they had to get it from southern Ohio, Cincinnati. And it's been nothing but problems ever since and we were, you know... I tell you, so as I've been mayor, it's just, I can tell you the, the most frustrating people you deal with is, are the railroads.
I was just curious because Sandusky is where everybody drives.
It's a disaster, I know. It's been a disaster for three years, so...
Right.
So we've talked to them and, you know, it's...
Okay.
We're still, we're still working with them. We're not giving up.
Any other questions to the mayor, Mr. Wireball?
Thank you.
Yeah, when the, when we first talked about this pool thing, we were presented, I'm not sure any of the current even here, but 10-year guarantee or warranty on the pool bottom, is that still hold?
I don't remember. I can't speak to that, I know what the warranty is, is that...
Anyone remember hearing that?
It sounds familiar, but I have to check, I have to go back. I would like to make sure we have that, especially with the conditions that were, you know... Yeah. Confronting today.
The other question was pool passes. I've heard a lot of comments about pool passes. Are they, are we going to do all that?
It's a good point. And we've already been talking about that possibility of just our rebate of other... It's, it's not good news, but we probably only had maybe, what, five days so far that were swappable. And the weather forecast is for rain. If you look at the weather channel, I mean, so, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make it that we're going to come and escape money. We are going to either rebate part of that or possibly, you know, give them a pass or a better buy next year's passes. So we're going to talk about those types of things. And make sure the people that already have invested in passes will get a fair shake. We're not going to, we're not going to forget those folks.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, is that it? Mr. Mayor?
Don't we do, yeah, I'm done. Do we do just now or...
Yes, we're going to move on to hear the Service Safety Director's report.
I'd like to refer, this is just, I'd like to refer the codified ordinance 1131-12 to the Plating Committee. The Pines Reservoir is already in public lands and buildings. And now I would like to refer it to the Economic Development. We opened various bids for the Marion/Field Traffic Light Project on June 13th and received several bids that were all under the engineer's estimate. We did not receive any bids for the concrete pile, but we were trying to solicit, solicit some businesses on our own. And we will be opening the Arrowhead Project bids and the Bike Path Project bids on June 20th. Mansfield/Whetstone Sewer Project, the pre-con meeting I talked about was yesterday. And that project will begin July 15th, weather permitting. That's, we'll put it on July 15th if the weather's good, we'll be in there if not, you know, we'll have to work that out. July 4th holiday, all non-emergency officers will be closed on the 4th and the 5th. Garbage pickup on Thursday, the 4th will be picked up the day before on Wednesday. And garbage pickup on Friday, July 5th will be picked up on Monday, July 8th. The Kiwanis fireworks show will be on Wednesday, July 3rd at dark and the rain date is set for July 7th. Now, go back to garbage, we try to get that out. If anybody has any suggestions. Memorial Day was a Monday. Whenever holiday falls on a Monday, we always pick up a mining on Tuesday. 11 people on Plymouth Street put their trash out on Monday, Memorial Day. So even though we've been out a month before, so if you guys have any ideas how we can get that out, we can put in the bills and, you know... So just keep, just keep an eye out on that. If you see people putting out trash on July 4th, let them know we're not coming out.
And that's always on the access channel.
That'll be, yeah.
On that, but it's always on the website.
That'll be on the website, yeah, and the...
And Facebook.
Yeah, too.
And the Facebook page.
And the Facebook.
And Facebook page too. We talked about Burger King. Construction process is set to begin August 1st. There has been no controversy about that. They're excited, we're excited. Be a nice addition for that side of town. Mill and Paint is almost complete. There's some concrete work. You saw work done on Lane Street, put the new curbs back like they were, looks really nice. There'll be, Wetstone was placed on hold. We didn't do all that because we're going to be tearing that up for the new sewer project. Car show we talked about, over 500 cars. There are three cruises from the Cleveland Police Museum. Made a great addition to this fine community of that. Safety Town, that was our graduation, two classes, more than 60 kids registered. Sarah and Nancy Lipscomb always do fantastic jobs. Sarah's heading off to college and really kind of single-handedly resurrected that program. Done a fantastic job. A lot of volunteers put it on them. Home Sheet Metal has been off to, off work and we're hoping that Terry is back on the 24th to complete the work on the salt pit in the gazebo. Gordmans is having ribbon cutting. They're the new Peebles in town and we're fortunate and happy to have them. See you at that ribbon cutting. Pickwood Place, the stalls, that ribbon cutting is not listed here. I will...
Next Friday.
Is it next Friday? Or is this Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday? This Friday, I think it's 11 o'clock. Okay, so Pickwood Place says, is, there's stalls, which is a building on the south side there is... We'll make sure Ty gets that reminder, everybody come show up to that. Tommy Turney. On June 7th and 9th, Busaras Little League held the annual Tommy Turney. There were 10 boys teams and six girls teams. Hats off to Little League and their workers for them successfully. We can have a lot of tournaments this year, starting early. And we changed the conflict side. We had some requests that we extended hours. Uh, Saturday, we're giving an extra hour. I know it doesn't seem like much, but we have to, as long as we have somebody on staff, we can have it open. So, we're going for two o'clock, till two o'clock, so that begins on the twenty-ninth, right? Twenty-ninth. And so, if you have your conflict, get that down. And I got one more thing I got, got to announce. This is a big deal. And I, we've been kind of working on this, so I'll give you, uh, give everybody the copy of this. We had a, uh, we had a tremendous gift given to us. I'm gonna tell you about. There you go. And then I'll read the news release. If you give me a chance to pass these out. There you go. I'll run to you. Can you guys share that one second? There you go.
I gotta share it.
Two. Thank you, thank you. All right, let me read this. This is the news release. We have been a beneficiary of a tremendous gift from North Central State Foundation. I was approached, uh, a little while back about the possibility of receiving a, their stage that they had on the campus there that they were no longer using. And it was in excellent shape and, uh, needs a few repairs here and there and repainting. And, uh, they were looking for, uh, someone to donate to. And we were ecstatic to get that stage. So, uh, the announcement goes like this. The City of Ucires has been working for several years on a multi-year project that removed an old theater and eventually erected what is known as Shine's Park. The final part to the, part to the community park will be the erection of a stage to be used for a variety of events in the future. The Mayor's Office has been responsible for obtaining the final grant to assist in building the stage. Grant was four hundred and twenty thousand. During that time, the stage was under construction. Under consideration, various proposals and bids were considered for different types of stages. However, all bids received exceeded the amount of money available for the stage and therefore none were accepted. Recently, North Central State College Foundation stepped up and offered a stage to the city that is relatively new, no longer in use by the college. And speaking with Christine Copper of the North Central College Foundation, she said the foundation has a real interest in helping the city in this project and thereby being a good community partner, as they are with the Success Center. And, uh, this is, uh, this is really another, uh, evidence of their commitment to the community. Uh, we deeply, deeply appreciate this gift. At this point, work will begin immediately to remove it from the current location and move it to the site at Shine's Park. Uh, we're gonna be, actually, it's in storage right now while we're, we're gonna have it repaired and repainted. And then we will re-erect it at Shine's Park. Uh, work will be done to engineer the placement of the stage and we're gonna be adding lighting and other aspects to complete the installation as well as some accoutrements to make it fit in to the decor and the theme of the park. And we would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to North Central State College and the foundation for this gift to the city. It is now anticipated that the cost of moving insulation will come under the total grant of the stage. So, this gift is going to save us, we think, around fifty thousand dollars. And so, we're gonna have a really high-quality stage there, uh, and it's, uh, the, the goal is to get up sometime late fall and then spring, you know, to, uh, finish it. To add the things that we're gonna finish in the next spring. So, we'll be all ready to go by the time that the grant is finished. I included a picture of what the stage looked like as it was being used by North Central State. That's what that, that's how they, uh, that's how they use it. Stage is going to be, uh, twenty feet by forty feet and it's gonna fit in there perfectly, so. Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, so if we're fifty thousand, or do we have to return, we return that money to?
Uh, I don't think we're gonna fifty, fifty thousand.
Or whatever, for five dollars.
Yeah, we, we, we would use it or lose it.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
Anything else?
I have some money about the report. About the Service Safety and a couple of questions. I, I have a few referrals a lot, but, uh, I'm gonna pick on the water service. Does Stephanie Drive again, have, have we ever?
Well, we're looking to talk about it just about every day. We've got what we're working on. We met again today for two hours about getting a plan, um, extend water line out in that area as well as, uh, ability to township. We have, we're juggling a lot of things. We're juggling rates, uh, we're juggling funding. We're juggling other expenses that are on our radar such as, uh, the reservoir issue, you know, we've gotta come up with that. We're just trying to figure out what we're gonna be able to fund, how our, uh, current income without releasing rates. And so, it's, we're, we don't have a plan, we'll have a plan, uh, to you and probably the first committee meeting in July. Okay, so July fourth is gonna be the first committee meeting.
And we're gonna move that.
Yeah, if you move it quicker, we won't have it, but if you move it the next week. We hope to have everything, uh, Joyce and I and Jeff met today and also met with Mike and Don and, uh, just which way we're heading, so. It's a very complicated issue, so.
I was told forty-five thousand dollars is what it would cost.
Forty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
To go where?
To Stephanie Drive, so I don't know and, uh.
I don't know who told you that, but it's.
Well, yeah. I don't know. Apparently it came from an engineer, so you can guess the rest. And they would like, they would like the administration to send them letters or about it. And, uh, the suggestion I got is that they may even be willing to put some of the money up, so.
Yeah, well, so anybody signs up is gonna have to put up, uh, tap into these.
Well, yeah.
What we choose now are not only going to affect Stephanie Drive, Steds Row, but they're also gonna affect, um, you know, places like Hospital North Robinson and, uh, Sulphur Springs. So, we're not gonna be able to charge Stephanie Drive one rate and then the other places another rate, so we have to take into account all these places. Uh, forty-five thousand, that's new to me. I mean, if you go to, it's, it's.
It's forty dollars a foot.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's more than a thousand feet.
That's just the number that someone threw out. I mean, that's just for. You never said you could do it for, so.
Oh, yeah, I, I, that, that hasn't told us that, so.
And I've also been approached about, uh, service to the Montsiede Road, if they're desperate, they want it, so. You may wanna throw that into your plan. Yes, I, I did talk to Dr. Johnson actually yesterday about that and he's in dire need of water other than pond water.
The problem, the problem is, you know, is return. So, if we have to, uh, finance this, um, you know, what is, what are their, uh, what are your minimum requirements? Are you, you know, we have to pay, do you wanna make a profit on this or you just wanna cover the cost of borrowing, the amortization cost? Typically, uh, if you sign up one house and they use sixty dollars a month, that's seven hundred and twenty dollars a year. So, it's gonna take a long time to, you know, if you're spending a hundred thousand dollars to get three houses, you know, it's, it's a, it's a long payback and, and, uh, you know, we wanna make sure that the folks out in the, uh, that are getting the service are not being subsidized by the people in the city. In other words, they're paying their own way.
You do it now. Where now? People that aren't annexed in the city are subsidized.
Well, they get, they pay one and a half now.
They pay one and a half, yeah. They get fire protection and they get police protection.
The, the people outside the city are in Westfield Township.
Yeah.
It's, it's, we, we get fire protection because of mutual aid.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we give every other township, so, yeah. I understand.
I, I understand, but, you know, it's, it's part of, it's being a community, I guess, but.
Well, Ucires is more than, uh, you know, it's more than borders in this. Ucires is, if you go outside a couple of miles, not even another four or five thousand people live here. Um, you know, they spend a lot of money in this community and are also involved in, in different organizations in this community. Kiwanis, Rotary, churches, um, so, you know, you know, it's, it's not us versus them, is what I'm talking about.
Not at all.
It's a complicated financial formula that we wanna make sure we are fair to everyone.
Okay, any other questions? I need a motion then to refer codified ordinance eleven thirty-one point one-two, which is about fire hydrants, uh, to the Plating Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Meyer and Mr. McKeever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. And then also, uh, plans are as far as already in public lands and buildings. Now, I'd like to quite refer it to Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Truca. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on. Lord Director?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of quick things. Uh, one, thank you, Mr. Hess. He was instrumental in getting the movie show last Friday and then the game Saturday when he was out of town. Uh, if you noticed, uh, I mean, it's still in the spring. I know somebody noticed. The burned-up place got, uh, is getting torn down right now, so that's, uh, that's, that's very good. Yeah, yeah, I think there was something for you that was there.
Starting to smell too.
Was that?
Starting to smell too because of the rain and all that mold.
The, a couple of things that, uh, need to be referred. We have a, um, easement issue for some of the waterline project that we need to refer to council for a resolution because the homeowner is not able to respond, so we need to go through the court process. So, does it ease it that we go to Plating, no, Service, I'm sorry, Service Committee?
Service and Finance?
Uh, no, there's no payment to it or anything, so it's just purely a service.
Okay.
Uh, for fourteen twenty-six Hopley. Uh, to Health and Safety, I need to refer our noise ordinance, uh, been an ongoing issue with respect to, um, that, and, uh, some of the downtown establishments. And recently had a trial on that and the court found our ordinance to be somewhat vague. So, we need to clarify that. The, uh, mea, or not the manpower ordinance, we have a, it's, it's actually a, I was trying to look what the actual ordinance is. But we need to refer, refer the, uh, our ordinance with respect to uh, residency requirements for administrative officials. Which is probably, is gonna be in chapter one of our code. Um, with respect to the residence requirement for the Service Safety Director. We'd like to refer that to the, uh, that goes to.
Health and Safety?
Administrative Code. It's, it's a, we think it's a service, but, um.
Health and Safety, we're having.
I think it's Health and Safety.
It's Police, Fire, and their bosses. Is that very, very, very powerful, right?
I mean, it's our choice. You see what it's covered under?
Yeah, it's, it's really not. It's, it's an administrative issue. Manpower compensation falls under Finance, but it's not a compensation issue.
But it's man, would be manpower, because it would be part of that legislation.
It is part of that legislation as well. So, it's, uh, Finance. And, uh, I think to be safe, we should also refer to the.
Health and Safety?
I think it's a more Service Committee, but we'd refer to.
Health and Safety is personnel issues, isn't it?
We've always done anything against, right, Finance, whether it's financial, whether it's.
Yeah.
Anyone who's said in Finance?
Yeah, the Health and Safety covers Police and Fire, which is, you know, what Department sees over, so. But it's definitely, you know, you finance it for, for the manpower purposes.
Okay, so it does Finance?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion then to, uh, place some easement issues into Service Committee at fourteen twenty-six Hopley? Or is there any other, and anything else you may have for that?
No, it's just a, it's just a resolution authorized me to go to court to seek the easement.
Okay, I need a motion?
So moved, second.
Mr. Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Meyer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. The noise ordinance needs to go to Health and Safety Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Meyer, second by Mr. Shock.
McKeever and Shock.
Uh-huh.
McKeever. Me, McKeever and Shock.
Oh. Okay, motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Shock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. And finally, a residency requirement for administrative official to Finance Committee. So moved. Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on, Auditor, Mrs. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President. I have several referrals this evening. We need several appropriations in the General Fund. The first being, uh, insecurity of persons and property, Police Department materials and supplies and the amount of twelve hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. That includes donations for Safety Town and the amount of two hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents and a grant that was received from Walmart to the Police Explorers of one thousand dollars.
Very nice.
And then we also need an appropriation in the Police Department capital outlay for the Police K-nine unit in the amount of, uh, five hundred dollars for a donation that was received. And then we also need an appropriation in the Derelict Building Liability Fund, uh, Fire Department, Other Uses in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for an insurance deposit that was received for three oh two to three oh four West Mansfield Street.
Okay, I need a motion then for the first item for, uh, Police Department for Materials and Supplies, twelve hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents uh, for a donation received for Safety Town and a don, and a grant for Police Explorers. Do I have a motion, please?
So, second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Then we also need an appropriation of Police Department capital outlay for the K-nine unit in the amount of five hundred dollars for a donation received. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Shock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We also need an appro, appropriation in Derelict Building Liability, Fire Department, Other Uses in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for an insurance deposit received with three oh two to three oh four West Mansfield Street. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. That's all you have for us for them Thursday, okay?
All I have.
Thank you. Uh, we also have the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position dated June the first, two thousand and nineteen. I need a motion to accept and file that.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Shock, second by Mr. McKeever to accept and file the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position dated June first. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Treasurer, we have the Treasurer's Report for May of twenty nineteen. It's been submitted for you to review. We will, uh, break it up for discussion at the next meeting. Fire Chief, nothing from the Fire Chief, from the Police Chief. I need a motion to accept the City Officers' reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Shock, second by Mr. McKeever to accept the City Officers' reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Um, this is where we have visitors' input regarding reports of the standing or special committees and of city officers. Does anyone wish to address counsel this evening? Does anyone wish to address council this evening? Yes, sir? Please state your name and address again, if you would.
Great bit off. I live at two-ten Apple Street. Um, I just had a quick comment about the Pines Reservoir.
Certainly.
Um, I just want to say that I think it's a shame that the city has known for, what, thirty-plus years about the condition of the Pines Reservoir and nothing's ever been done. I've been using that reservoir for, since I was a child. My grandfather fished at that reservoir when he was a child. I'm pretty sure that none of you probably ever have boated on the Pines or hunted on the Pines or, um, people do use the Pines. I know where it's going. I know the Pines is going away, um, but I would like to see it stay part of the city, part of, so the public can still use it. I don't want it to see, to go to a private citizen that can develop it or whatever. I'd like to see it stay part of the city or donate it to the Park District. I've heard that come up a couple of times. I know every fall, there's a list of people that sign up to hunt the Pines Reservoir, migratory bird hunt, they deer hunt out there. It is being used. I don't know if everybody knows that or not, but, um, I just hate to see it go away. I know it's going away, but I just like to see it go that way.
Hey, there's a...
I love your comment on his, on his comment. I know, you know, it seems like the city, like you say, for thirty years hasn't done anything, but here's the problem. Every, every four, eight, whatever years, there's a new administration. You forget about what happened last time.
It has nothing to do with the council.
And we don't have a plan for these things in the future, you know? We don't have a plan, what's going to happen with the Pines. And we ran into the same thing when, when we paid off the reservoir and we weren't putting that money back for the, for the, uh, new water plant, you know? It just went to water meters and I'm not sure where. But, but, you know, that's something that, that we need, uh, in, in the city is that to, to have, to plan that, you know? Maybe we won't be here in four years, you know? So how are we going to move from there? So that's something everybody needs to think about.
I know if I was told in thirty years, I'm going to need a million dollars, I would start putting money back today, you know? It's a shame that over the years it wasn't done and now...
It is, it's a shame. I agree.
And I know the mayor likes the bike paths and he likes the parks around here and everything, but don't forget the Pines.
Yeah.
I mean, it's being used, it's there. And if it, if it goes away and just becomes a little drainage ditch, I mean, keep it part of the city so we can use it. I don't want it to just go completely away.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comment.
We have no legislation for this evening. Unfinished business, does anyone have any unfinished business? Yes?
I do. Um, I, I made notes on it the whole time, but then I ignored the actual underlying thing. We, we have the draft of our report, uh, for Pogemire, this is already in our economic development and...
It's in your packet.
Finance Committee, um, take a look at it.
Do you want to explain what it is so that we can get that there?
Well, this is, we had, we had some meetings a while back, almost a year ago now, I think, um, where we discussed updating our CRA and Enterprise Zone, um, programs. One of the, two things that were left out of that, our CRA Enterprise Zone, was, uh, private residences and rentals, um, and, um, retail establishments. So, um, we, we talked about economic development, I'd recommended that we get those things updated and get those things taken care of. So we, that was Pogemire, who is the group that originally set up our CRA and Enterprise Zone. Uh, for whatever reason, we didn't have the management way back when the city decided they were going to do it themselves. But we have looked at having Pogemire handle it for us now and, and we'll see a much better response. We put together, uh, a lot of things that they can help us with and, and market and, and they put together the draft of all the things that came out of your committee and that we looked at. Some of the additions are the retail establishments and being able to qualify for CRA Enterprise Zone, um, uh, reductions. Rental properties, as you know, I, I, you know, bowled about rental properties, but this is something that can help incentivize, uh, rental property owners to, you know, get in there and do some, fix it up and, and get some, uh, property tax credit back for it. Uh, and homeowners as well, because it would apply to them now, something that was kind of left out previously, is, um, the ability for homeowners to do that. Um, we want to move forward, um, because obviously we've got a business or two that's, uh, in our sights to take advantage of this, um, and, and there, looking forward to seeing this done. The process will be, we'll, uh, if you guys have any comments or anything that you want to send back to Pogemire, uh, with respect to changes, we'll talk about that on Thursday. We'll send those to Pogemire, they can make changes, drafts, whatever. Um, and then they will put this in final form, they will send it out to the school districts, all three of the, we have three school districts in our city. And, um, all the school districts have a chance to comment to make sure they're okay with it. And then it will get sent to, um, uh, the state for approval and eventually council then has to approve it. Yeah, there's been a little bit of change there and I'll get, I'll get a notice on that. The addresses, the email from Pogemire, you know, that, you know, some of the addresses, I think we sent forty-some houses or thirty-some houses that were ones that we suggested were ones that could be in, in use. Uh, one or two will maybe be developed by the time this comes through. Um, and we corrected those addresses with mostly a couple of typos and some of them were on corners and it was not one, I think, it was the other. Um, so that's it. I mean, look through it if you have anything that jumps out at you. Let me know, we'll communicate that back with them. Um, her notes on that email that I included, her email with it, kind of highlight, you know, the things that are changes from what the old version was to what the new version will be and what their management, you know, will, will be to help with it, so. Talk about it on Thursday and, you know, just, we'll like reading for you to be on then.
Any unfinished business anyone would like to bring up this evening? Okay, moving on to new and miscellaneous business. We need to reschedule our joint, we're going to committee meeting, uh, for the next council meeting will be on July the second. And, uh, so the fourth would be our normal meeting for committees and I don't think anybody wants to be here July the fourth. Um, how about the eighth? Which is the following Monday, which gives us time then, uh, for, uh, for them to be able to handle legislation yet that we have ready for the next council meeting, uh, which would be on the sixteenth. Is the eighth available, everybody? Want to do it at regular time, six P.M.? Yes? You can say yes. Thank you? Okay. So we will, uh, I need a motion then to reschedule, okay? That was Mr. Foote. And, uh, second by...
Second.
Mr. Myers to reschedule the next regular joint committee meetings on, from Thursday to July the fourth to Monday, July the eighth. Now, our regular meeting this week will be Thursday evening at six, okay? Um, also a referral, uh, to, uh, public lands and buildings. We'd like to refer the utility building kiosk in, in City Hall to public lands and buildings. Do I have a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. On Wednesday, June the nineteenth, tomorrow, annual Kwanis Chicken Barbecue is out at the Crammer County Fairgrounds from eleven A.M. to seven P.M. It's nine dollars. Do you have to have tickets in advance?
No.
No?
Technically, you don't.
Technically, you don't.
No.
But don't wait to buy.
But it might be, it might be...
Don't wait, don't wait too late. Yeah.
Get your tickets.
There's, there's just a drive-through, right? There's no E-N or anything?
Yeah, there is, there's a need.
Yes, the need building.
Uh, yeah, building, okay. Uh, Friday, June the twenty-eighth is the annual South of the Square Block Party in downtown Visseris from eleven A.M. to two P.M. They usually have hot dogs and soda and...
It's all for charity.
It's all for charity and they're raising money down there taking donations. Always, uh, uh, nice thing going on there. Wednesday, July the third is Visseris City, uh, Visseris Fire Show. It's presented by the Visseris Kwanis Club and, uh, it's at the Crammer County Fairgrounds at nine-thirty or whenever it gets dark and, uh...
Yes, it will be at dusk.
It will be at dusk.
I've already taken care of everything.
You've already, you've already, you've already taken care of that, okay?
That's true.
Yes.
Can I ask Mr. Kwanis over there? Do you have a rain, get a, get a rain...
Rain date's always, uh, I always set it up for July third with the rain date on the seventh, because, uh, the third usually falls roughly on a Wednesday or two, then the seventh on the seventh.
No, sure.
Yeah.
July the seventh and, and so we're going to have parking?
Yes, uh, parking will be in the, um, the field area out there and then all the way around up to the horse barns and then up by the grandstands and all that. There will be Mark's Homemade Ice Cream there. Uh, we will have Charlie's Kettle Corn there, like has been for the last two years. And, uh, Charlie will also be bringing a New York-style hot dog stand as well, so there will be, uh, food as well for somebody to get light snacks and that as well.
Thursday and Friday, July the fourth and fifth, uh, is the intended stage. City offices will be closed and you heard the schedule for crash pickup. Crash pickup will not take place on those two days. Uh, Thursdays is done on Wednesday and Fridays is done on Monday, so, uh, make a note of that so you don't forget. One more thing.
Friday night, movie night.
There's been one more thing.
Well, I know, I know, one more thing, because this one's, this one's in your favor though. Friday night, movie night, the twenty-first, Mark's Homemade Ice Cream is a sponsor, one of your personal favorite movies out here.
Okay, I'll be there.
What's the ride with?
What's the ride with?
Uh, non-orange.
Can I make a suggestion on the movie night real quick? Me and my wife were up there for the American Graffiti movie and is it possible to move the soup trucks like to the other side of the street or, because all we heard was people buying food and the lights and everything and...
Okay.
If they get scooping back or moving down and then when they hook up, they leave, all you hear is motors running and them hooking up trailers and things and...
See what you can do about that, yeah.
But it was really nice. I appreciated it Friday night. It was nice watching that movie. We sat there in our blanket and it was great. Whoever was in charge of that, thank you.
We're hoping for one with them, like it's necessary.
Okay, we're all here, here this evening. Uh, the joint writer committee meetings, all referrals from this council meeting and any open project list items may be discussed during committee meetings this Thursday at six P.M. The referrals are?
We have nine new referrals. We have the, uh, requested traffic map change from, uh, the Traffic Commission, Health and Safety. We have an amendment to codified ordinance eleven thirty-one point twelve, which deals with fire hydrants. That's from the Service Safety Director of Plating. We have the status of the Pines Reservoir, which is already in public lands and buildings, which will be on the agenda. And it will also be in economic development, uh, that is from the Service Safety Director. We have the utility, uh, building kiosk in City Hall from Council Public Lands and Buildings. We have the noise, codified noise ordinance, uh, from the Law Director to Health and Safety. We have various appropriations from the Auditor to Finance. We have, uh, use of the City Hall lobby for a, uh, organization from the Mayor, Public Lands and Buildings. We have easements, uh, on, uh, Hoppe Avenue from the Law Director to the Service Committee. And we have, uh, residency, uh, requirements for administrative officials from the Law Director, that's in the manpower ordinance, from the Law Director to Finance. Our the A-ing committee and on the agenda for Thursday, as I mentioned, Pines Reservoir and public lands and buildings in addition to economic development, uh, the status of the old Royal Waterline, uh, the engineer will be here to discuss that. That'll be in Service and in Necessary Finance and the citywide, uh, CRA, any closing comments.
Okay, thank you very much. I need a motion to adjourn?
Still moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foote to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We are adjourned at eight oh-four P.M. Thank you.